We made it. Everybody here? Oh, we got it. Okay. Welcome to the Dana Point City Council Meeting of May 3rd, 2022. There was no closed session this evening, so Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please let the record show that all council members are present.
All right, thank you. That'll bring us to the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilmember Federico, please lead us.
Please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But you can be seated. Thank you for coming in this evening. We have three, we have a couple of presentations this evening. The Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year was scheduled to be on the agenda tonight, but however, Ms. Rojas is a little bit under the weather, so we're going to reschedule that for a future event. That brings us to National Small Business Week. We have, all right, we have Ms. McGann, Katie McGann from the Marketing Events Manager for the Chamber of Commerce and Board Chair Marco Sconomilio. Did I get that right? Can't, I'm gonna get it right one of these times. So if you join me down here. We inducted you that you're just going by Marco from now on.
Yeah.
You made it. Everybody here? We got it. Okay. Welcome to the Dana Point City Council Meeting of May 3, 2022. There was no closed session this evening, so Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please let the record show that all council members are present.
All right, thank you. That'll bring us to the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilmember Federico, please lead us.
Please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But you can be seated. Thank you for coming in this evening. We have three, we have a couple of presentations this evening. The Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year was scheduled to be on the agenda tonight, but however, Ms. Rojas is a little bit under the weather, so we're going to reschedule that for a future event. That brings us to National Small Business Week. We have, all right, we have Ms. McGann, Katie McGann from the Marketing Events Manager for the Chamber of Commerce and Board Chair Marco Sconomilio. Did I get that right? Can't, I'm gonna get it right one of these times. So if you join me down here. We inducted you, that you're just going by Marco from now on. Now you guys know why, if you ever saw the spelling of that name. So May 1 through 7 is the National Small Business Week. As for the last 50 years, the National Small Business Week has been put on by the U.S. Small Business Administration. Dana Point is really driven by our small businesses. I want to say 68% of the businesses in Dana Point have five or fewer employees. Without you guys, you truly are the blood, lifeblood of this community. We appreciate everything you do. We want to actually recognize everything you do for the community. And with this, let me grab the strip kit for you. With this certificate of recognition, so right here, more than half Americans either own or work for small businesses and they create nearly two out of every three new jobs in the U.S. each year. As part of NSBW, the SBA takes the opportunity to highlight the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs, small business owners, and others who support entrepreneurship from all 50 states, Washington DC and U.S. territories. So that's why it's so important for us to recognize our partners in the city, everything you guys do for us, so keep it up. Congratulations.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, well, I appreciate it, Mayor Joe Miller, I really do. I think I can speak on behalf of a lot of the businesses here in Dana Point. We are just so very lucky to operate and some of us live in an amazing city. We cannot thank you guys enough, especially during the tough times of COVID. You guys were exceptional to work with, and so we greatly appreciate you.
So we at the chamber, we celebrate small business every day of the year, but since it's nationally recognized this week, we just want to encourage the community to kind of get out, go visit your favorite restaurant, your favorite shop, or visit somewhere new that you've never been before and just thank these small businesses in our community. So thanks all.
That's why we let her go last, she's a good marketer. Brings us up to our next presentation. This is Wayne Yost from Veterans of Foreign War Post 9934 on the Veteran Cemetery of Gypson Canyon Anaheim. And it's a great pleasure to be a mayor through this. However, I have three veterans sitting on this council with me right here. Think it's important that they all come down, including the mayor pro tem. The entire council needs to come down and accept this, so while we wait for them to come down.
This is for you guys, man. So I think everybody knows who I am with Veterans of Foreign Wars. What you may not know is that I've served on the executive board for a consortium of 157 veteran service organizations. And for the past 12 years, we've been trying to get an Orange County Veteran Cemetery. And we have hit insurmountable roadblocks at every single turn. Last fall, the city of Dana Point drafted a ordinance, would it be? Or a letter of resolution, resolution supporting a veteran cemetery at the Gypson Canyon Anaheim Hills location. They were the third city in Orange County to do it, right at the very beginning of this process. And I thank you for jumping on that right away. I attended the city council meetings and as a result, the other 31 cities in Orange County also adopted resolutions unanimously, with the exception of one councilperson in an unnamed city that voted against it. Last Tuesday, I had the honor of addressing the California State Legislative Veterans Affairs and Military Committee, where they read the Assembly Bill 1095, which was in support of establishing a new veteran cemetery in the Anaheim Hills area. They voted unanimously to support that. It will now be going on to the full assembly and the senate. We've already been in touch with Governor Newsom, who has also read the bill and said as soon as it passes the senate and the House of Representatives up in Sacramento, that he will sign it, and it is marked urgent, so they can jump on this thing and get it started right away. So I just want to thank all of you up here for being one of the first to really jump on this and get this ball rolling finally, so our veterans can have a final resting place in a close proximity in Orange County. So the Orange County Board of Supervisors gave me this plaque, and it's got all 34 cities on it with the names of the attendees who did the initial flagpole groundbreaking ceremony last fall. And Jamie, your name is on there with the city of Dana Point seal. And so I wanted to present this to you. And once again, thank you for your support, not only of our veterans and military, but our first responders, our cities. Just as a side note, we had a community block party at Sunset Park last Saturday. The sheriff's department put on a phenomenal display. We had a great turnout, we had about 450 people show up. And thanks to all the city staff that helped us organize this and get it together. It was a great event, and I'm so proud to be a citizen of Dana Point. Thank you.
All right, very briefly, I was there and had a chance to be the groundbreaking of what is an absolutely beautiful site. And thank you, Wayne, for including us. Quite frankly, we should be giving this to Wayne and all the members of the VFW who worked so hard to make that happen. It's nice that you're doing this, but this was all your work. We were honored to support it. We would have been the first city, if not for a couple of cities who had meetings earlier than the first Tuesday of the month, right? And I remember that vote very clearly, the issue came up, a bunch of veterans came and spoke, and we just unanimously approved it with nothing else to say about it. It was an honor to be there, thank you for doing this. What Wayne talked about in the Assembly Bill and the senate bills, that the land got set aside and we had a groundbreaking back in December, but the cemetery can't happen without the funding from the state. So now the state legislature is working on approving the funding to actually make it happen. So if we ever hear from Wayne that there are any obstacles or holdups to that, please write to your state assemblyman or state senator and tell them to fix that. It sounds like it certainly won't happen.
Yeah, just as an addendum to that, to let you know that we've already secured $47 million in funding, that is not state taxpayer money.
And just a reminder to Sacramento, we have a $66 billion budget surplus. I think we have plenty of money to take care of our veterans, so.
Thank you, Wayne.
Well, thank you, everybody, and again, congratulations to the chamber. Thanks for what you do. And Wayne, thank you so much for all the hard work you did on that project. It wouldn't have got done without the veterans and all the work they did around the state. That brings us to the next item, reading of the ordinances and titles. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances to read?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight before you is the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, Adding Section 11.55 to Chapter 11 of the Dana Point Municipal Code, Establishing Regulations Prohibiting the Unlawful Possession of Catalytic Converters in the City."
Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one rule call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any items to be removed by the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Staff? Thank you, council? No? Okay, I'll move the, I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passage unanimously, perfect. Ma'am, we're moving on, public comments. There will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall timeline of 30 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and should not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Looks like we have one public comment this evening. David Dodson, you have three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is David Dodson. I'm a candidate running for the State Board of Equalization. I've been a Dana Point resident now for 27 years. I've raised two children here and recently became a new grandfather. My kids attended RHJ in elementary school, where I was once a PTA treasurer. They attended Daniel's High School and played sports there. And many of you or some of you may recognize me as a volunteer in kid sports and or surfing at Doheny or Salt Creek. But anyways, I've a, the Board of Equalization administers California's property tax system, and I have worked for the Board of Equalization for 30 years. I run the Southern California Office of the Board of Equalization. And I'm committed using my expertise and experience in this very specialized field to protect your property tax rights. And you know, a lot of people think that property tax law is written in stone. In fact, property tax law changes every year. I feel that you deserve someone who understands property tax law and can adapt to the changes as they show, as they come across. So I just want to say, I know that the Board of Equalization is not always the highest priority for voters, but I do hope that people will take a look at the candidates running this race. I think when you do, you'll find that I am the most qualified candidate, the one with the experience and the knowledge to serve the public the best. And I just hope, I'm glad to have the opportunity to introduce myself and hopefully you all pay attention to that part of the race and looking forward to June 7. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, any additional public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll go ahead and close that. That brings us to new business, item number 11, Pension Funding Policy and Section 115 Investment Strategy. Mr. Kilabrew, do you have a staff report?
Yes, C. Shelton, our finance manager, will provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and members of the city council. Tonight, we have before you a pension funding policy and a request to fund the city's Section 115 trust. As you all know, the city embarked on an endeavor to address its unfunded pension liabilities a few years back, including putting a significant portion of general fund monies aside to fund a Section 115 trust. COVID-19 came and delayed the process, and as of March 1, the city approved a resolution to join a Section 115 pension trust with pars and also to choose Vanguard Investments as the investment manager. So tonight, and also the city currently has $4 million, $4 million set aside to fund its Section 115 trust. So tonight, we have a proposed pension funding policy for council consideration and also to get approval to move that $4 million to the Section 115 trust into the Vanguard Conservative Strategy. The policy, the draft policy is included as an attachment to the staff report, so I'd be happy to answer any questions specific to the policy. And all these items and all this information was discussed last week at the Financial Review Committee meeting on April 26, and the FRC did approve recommendation to city council to approve the $4 million to the Conservative Strategy as well as approval of the policy. And that concludes my staff report, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. I got to tell you, that's impressive, you never looked down once. Wish I had that skill. Do you have any questions from council? Seeing none right now, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you have a motion?
I will move the item as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, be a motion in a second. Any comments on this? I have one, I want to thank the FRCs for working so diligently on this. As councilmember Vic Sorek and I both know, this all started in my mind, working at OCFA and our unfunded pension liabilities and the real, you know, liability that had become to the agency. And we had to come up with a plan on how to address that, and I know Rick talks about that a lot, the snowball plan. But anyway, so thanks for moving this forward. This is important that we take care of our employees. You know, you make a commitment, you got to live up to it. We got to make sure we have the funding there to do that. So with that, I'll take the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed, that passes unanimously, so thank you very much, Ms. Shelton. Great report. Item 12 is Initiation of a General Plan Update and Request for Proposals to Conduct Community Engagement. Mr. Kilabrew, do we have, oh, Ms. Dines, all right, here we go.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller. City council, my name is Belinda Dynas, Principal Planner, and I am pleased to present to you the initiation of a general plan update and a request for proposals to conduct community engagement. The city council has already given its bird's eye, big picture direction for this general plan update. The city council set aside $1 million in the general plan reserve account for this effort, and in the city's recently adopted strategic plan, the city council identified the general plan update as a priority project. Looking forward and beyond through a lens into the future, the city's general plan is a long-range policy document that guides the city's physical development. It is a comprehensive collection of goals, policies, and actions that reflect the community's vision and its values. Originally adopted in 1991, the Dana Point General Plan is over 30 years old and long overdue for an update. Most elements have not been updated since the 1990s, except for the housing and public safety elements, which were revised this year as required by state law. The plan itself is comprised of both state mandated and optional elements with specific topics as shown, and each element is required to be internally consistent and coordinated with one another. Furthermore, three of the elements highlighted in yellow are, make up the Certified Land Use Plan of the city's local coastal program. I like to think that this image reflects the purpose of the general plan. Ultimately, we are charting the city of Dana Point's future. We intend to create a robust plan that navigates our community into the next 20 to 30 years for all generations, especially our youth. We hope to paddle together and reel in answers to these simple questions. How did we get here and where are we now? Where do we want to go and how do we get there? To initiate the general plan update, staff proposes two distinct phases. The first phase is visioning, and the purpose is to engage the people of Dana Point, locals and spectators alike, with a dedicated communications and public relations plan and implement a comprehensive community engagement program. This involves educating the community on city planning, gathering input and data from the public and various stakeholder groups, and receiving city council direction and Planning Commission recommendations on identifying key concerns and issues. This phase will establish a clear vision statement with a set of values and guiding principles to facilitate policy development. Phase two is plan development, which involves bridging one's, phase one's community input, data, vision, and values into the policy priorities and actions that result in the actual amendments to the general plan itself. Once the draft is prepared, there is an environmental review and public review of the final plan. The project follows the general plan amendment procedures as specified by the Dana Point Municipal Code, which requires recommendation by the Planning Commission and ultimately approval by the city council. This is the planning process for a 21st century comprehensive general plan. The process involves setting the stage through our visioning in phase one, developing a general plan update in phase two, ultimately implementing the plan, and continually evaluating progress as it relates back to the city's vision and values. Most importantly, community engagement serves as the foundation at every step of the planning process through authentic and diverse public participation. I won't get into the details, but know that we have every intention of applying the best planning practices and focusing on the process to have successful outcomes for the city's general plan. Also, the system shows that the general plan is not just a document that gets updated and sits on the shelf once it's adopted. Rather, it is an active guide that will continually lead Dana Point into the future. Here we are, excited and ready to jump feet. Here we are, excited and ready to jump feet first into a huge endeavor, which will require significant leadership, resources, and support from the Dana Point community. Staff recommends that the city council initiate a general plan amendment for a comprehensive update and directs staff to request proposals from qualified and public engagement consulting firms. As for next steps, city staff will return to the city council by July with a recommendation for contract approval with an engagement consultant. Once phase one of the project has been completed, the city council will review the results of the visioning exercise and project scope. We will begin phase two with a separate RFP for preparation of the update and associated environmental review. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the initiation request and general plan update process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dynas. I'm going to get that right one of these days. I always say Dynas. I don't know why I do that. Do you have any questions from council? Madam Clerk, any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close it and bring it back for any, for a motion on this.
I'll move the item.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have a quick question on this. So you're going to get back to us in July, just with the RFP, correct?
Correct.
We're going to send out the RFP, so we're not actually going to start phase one until after we select our consultant, and then that'll start phase one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I was a little concerned, confused, because I was reading in the staff report that phase one was going to take twelve to eighteen months, but you're going to be back to us in July, so I was like, that's pretty quick. What is the ultimate plan on how many, how many, you know, community meetings, we're going to have outreach sessions? How are we going to get out to the community to figure out what they're thinking, what their concerns are? Do we have any idea on that, or are we dependent on the consultant for that?
We will rely on the consultant's proposals to determine an appropriate outreach plan. We'll rely on the consultant's expertise to give us a framework for what the engagement program will look like.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dynas, I know we're going to do separate RFPs. In general, would you think we would end up with the same consultant for all three phases in general? Or is it pretty, is it common that we might have different consultants?
In other cities, I've seen examples of both. So there could be a consultant who will team with the consultant that ultimately prepares the general plan update. However, the engagement consultant specializes in public relations and communications in that sense versus the traditional planning firm that does the plan preparation and environmental. So I've seen it both ways, where a planning firm will have in-house engagement specialists who are well-versed in the general plan process.
Got it. But if they are a different consultant for visioning, they're expected to basically hand over all documentation in whatever format is needed for consulting and plan development and so on?
Correct.
Great, okay. And when we, I guess when we do the RFP for visioning, I want to make sure we don't scale down on the community engagement. I know just how long it took us to do the strategic plan and then the great work we did down in Doheny Village. Community engagement is so critical there that I would probably ask the city manager to feel free to make sure that it's a critical component in that. And if we need to realign budget going forward, I think that community engagement is probably an acceptable reason to potentially update the budget. With that, that'd be all I'd have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dynas, for a great report again. Brings us to item thirteen, ordinance establishing regulations prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converters in the city. Mr. Kilabrew, do you want me to take this since I asked for it to be put on? Okay, this is an issue that's been going on around the county and around the state. We know that our public safety officers are usually have their hands tied. They find these folks driving around with fifteen, twenty catalytic converters in their car, but if they don't see them take them, they can't prove that they're not theirs. This is a program that will allow us to etch your VIN number and our individual identification number on the catalytic converter. So if these individuals that are out there creating, committing these crimes are pulled over, our deputies or CHPs or whoever happen to catch them will have a way to recognize that this is stolen property and we can do something about this. This is something that we work with our chief Monteleone about. I think it's important for the community to make sure that our law enforcement has the opportunity to actually start cracking down on this. And that's my staff report on this. If there's any questions or if you'd like to comment on it.
No, this is a great opportunity for the Sheriff's Department.
What's that?
Okay. This is a great opportunity for the Sheriff's Department to work hand-in-hand with the city of Dana Point. There are several other cities in the Orange County area that have municipal codes such as this. This will give our deputies, first responders, a great tool to use to combat the catalytic converter theft that's going on right now.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing this up to us. So this is something that I know a couple of other cities working on it that are much larger than ours, and they're having a much larger problem with it than we are. It was a great idea, and then Kirsten brought it up and said she thought it'd be a good idea if we got involved. So do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Vexork?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for legal. I know violation of the section is a misdemeanor. And right under that, it says that the remedies provided here and are not to be construed as exclusive remedies. I interpret that to mean, since these catalytic converters can be more than nine hundred and fifty dollars, I believe they are, worth more than nine hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a possibility that they can be prosecuted as felonies or if we have some type of interaction with the county DA's office to pursue those as additional remedies to what we have? Thank you.
Yes, that's actually exactly correct. The, that's the purpose for that language. We're able to prosecute violations of the municipal code. So when I say we, my office. So we're able to prosecute tickets that are citations that the sheriffs might give out for people technically violating this law. If it turns out that they have sufficient evidence to bring a case against someone for having possession of, you know, stolen property or having actually stolen the property themselves, if it's more than the threshold for misdemeanor, then the district attorney can prosecute it. What ends up happening in cases like this where we have both a misdemeanor code violation and potentially a penal code violation is that either our office will work with the district attorney and ask for permission to prosecute the penal code violation, or we'll ask the district attorney to prosecute the municipal code violation. So, you know, we just typically kind of coordinate with them and do whatever makes the most sense. If there's a felony involved, our office is not able to prosecute it, so under those circumstances, it would be turned over to the DA.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Federico?
It's a quick question. I appreciate you and the police, the Sheriff's Department bringing this, and I'm going to vote for it. You mentioned that we can etch VIN numbers in the catalytic converters. That is not part of this, correct?
No, it actually is. We are going to.
It's, there's two parts to this. This will allow for a misdemeanor citation for possessing any catalytic converter that isn't either attached to your car or that you have some kind of proof of the right to have it, either ownership or some other kind of information that shows that you have the right to have it. So that's specifically what this is about. We're also leaning into looking at some devices that will allow us to provide a community service by having a device that will allow us to stand up an etching service, if you will. There's some technology out there that allows us to, that provides that ability, and we're looking into getting, getting those types of devices.
That's the part that I had my question about. I didn't see any details on that, so that's sort of, we're still looking into that, but, okay.
That part's not in the ordinance.
Right.
Once we had a program like that, it wouldn't make it that much easier for the deputies.
Yeah, and that's something that wouldn't need to be an ordinance, not municipal code. That's just a program that we do, right? Where we help people get their VIN numbers etched onto their catalytic converters.
Yes.
Coupled with this ordinance, now we've got etched catalytic converters running around out there and makes it easier to help solve this. Generally speaking, I'm not a fan of adding more policy or adding more ordinances. Generally, you know, generally more ordinances are not always better, especially when you can't enforce them, but this is one of those that really costs us nothing. We don't have to provide additional resources to our police services department in order to enforce it. It just gives them another tool. So I support it and I will vote for it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, any public comments on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll go ahead. Since it's my item, I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you. And I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Federico. That was a big part of this. I remember growing up and, or living in Dallas years ago where our Dallas police had etching programs to deal, we would etch all the windows on cars because there's so much, you know, carjacking and auto theft going on, which is an easier way for us to keep track of it. So that's why I thought this was interesting, because they do need the actual lever to enforce, so. Any other comments? Nope. Oh, Mr. Balar?
Yeah, I echo what Councilmember Federico's saying here, and thank you guys for bringing this up. This is actually personal for me. My mom, who actually turns eighty-five tomorrow, she doesn't live in Dana Point, but she lives in Northern California, woke up about a year ago and her, turned on her car and her catalytic converter was gone, and her car sounded like it was going to explode. So not only, you know, she's on a fixed income, but it's also, you know, she's without a car for a week trying to get this thing fixed. You know, all of my brothers pitched in to help her, and I know, I share this with all the other council members, at least once a month, if not twice a month, they get an email from someone in Capital Beach that says, "My catalytic converter was stolen in front of my house." Right? And you may be thinking, when I first saw this, I was thinking, well, what is this going to really do? But if it's a tool, if it's something that you think is going to, is going to help, yeah, it may not solve every single crime, but man, it's, if it's something that you think is going to help you, I am a hundred percent for it. So thank you for bringing this up, and I'm definitely going to, I'm supporting this.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody passes unanimously, so thank you for everybody's help on this. That brings us to public comments, a second round of that. I'm actually going to mention that we did receive a public comment via email from Ms. Hoyan Ip regarding pesticides and the habitat loss of the monitor butterfly, so it's available. It'll be a part of this packet. Brings us to council comments. Mr. Balar?
I have turned in my meeting notices and I don't have anything to report.
Councilmember Vexork?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report. I've turned in my list of meetings.
Councilmember Federico?
I've turned in my list of meetings. I'll steal somebody's thunder.
Go ahead.
Actually, I'll let you do it.
Now, go ahead.
I'll let you do the redo market. Instead, I'm going to, I'll let him do it. I'm going to welcome Alderman Joe Massey from the city of Middletown, New York, who comes and visits us. Alderman Massey, how are you? Visits Dana Point, always comes and visits our meetings. Civic duty for him has no coastal boundaries, apparently. He's. And anyway, I do think the value of local government is important, and it's cool to always see Alderman Massey here, so thanks for joining us again.
Mayor Protem Frost?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have turned in my list of meetings, and was it your expectation I would do redo market or did you?
You can do whatever you want. I go last, so if you take it, it's yours.
It was a great event, but I'll let you handle the details.
Oh, okay. With that, I have turned in my list of meetings. I have a couple of things I want to talk about. One of them is the redo market was a fantastic event this weekend. I don't know what the actual numbers were, but it had to be ten to twelve thousand people down there, which was much larger than anybody had anticipated. The thing that was most exciting about it is when we started in the Lander District, what was called the Town Center, it was designed to do exactly what that was. Shut the whole street down, we'll set the vendors up, it'll be a street fair. People will be walking around enjoying different beverages, if you could say, a lot of food trucks. There was just a lot of energy down there, and it really showed off what the vision was for that area. So I was so excited about it. It was such a great event. My family really enjoyed it. I think most of us were there. Saw a lot of the vendors around, a lot of locals and a lot of people I'd never seen before. So it's doing what it was meant to do, is to draw more people in and make them aware of Dana Point. So great job, staff on that and the redo folks. The other thing I wanted to talk about tonight is e-bikes. I'm going to ask for some help from the council. So the state has been doing a good job and working with Assemblymember Davies, and I started talking about this months ago, that e-bikes are, I take, I get more emails and complaints about e-bikes in the city than anything else, and it's by a magnitude about kids that are young riding these electric bikes. And we all know that these things are big, they're heavy, they're fast, and they're really more of a motorcycle than they are of a bicycle. And a lot of these kids don't know the rules of the road. And so we started talking about this, and Assemblymember Davies started work with OCTA developing an education program, just like a boat or safety program. If you wanted to drive a jet ski or a boat when you were under the age of sixteen. What they, what they've lacked doing is actually reclassifying the e-bike as a motor vehicle. They don't want to do that. And they haven't put any teeth in the training course. It's not a requirement. If they're going to do it, we need to make it a requirement. So when our deputies do interact with these kids that are doing something that they shouldn't be doing, they need to let them know they have to take this class, or you're going to, we're going to impound your bikes, or your parents are going to have to come get them or do something. But there needs to be something out there. There needs to be some teeth in this that actually forces the parents to put their kids into these programs. It's a matter of time before somebody gets seriously hurt on this. I know we've had some deaths. In particular, I don't know of any child deaths, but there's been adults dying on these things. And we've had one down here in San Juan Creek, and I know of one specifically in Laguna Beach. You know, we need to help people understand, this is not your bicycle. This is not a street bike. This is not a BMX bike or even a mountain bike. They're heavy, they're fast, and they can do damage when you hit something. So I would like the council to give direction to staff to start looking at an ordinance if for no other reason to require a class for any kid, any child or anybody sixteen years of age or younger that wants to ride one in Dana Point, if for no other reason to allow the deputies to have some, I don't, teeth, I guess is the right word, and when they pull these kids over to help them understand, they are going to start impounding these bikes and get it out there and help the state understand, this is not our job. This is a state-level issue, but if they're not going to do it, we have to take a position locally and try to educate these kids and make sure they truly understand what the dangers are on the streets, the danger they put themselves in and the dangers they put others in when they ride them on these paths, when they can't see around these curves, and they're going to hit somebody sooner or later, and I'm sure it's happened. I've heard about a couple of them. I don't know how bad it is, but I'm sure somebody's going to get hurt. So I'm going to ask for it to happen anyway. If there's any head nods, if I have any support on it, I don't know. But I think with, I think it's Saturday that we have the event over at Dana Hills? On the fourteenth? Okay, in a week from Saturday, we have an event over at Dana Hills High School where the Assemblywoman Davies is coming down, partnering with CHP, and I know the Orange County sheriffs are going to be there as well, along with the city of San Clemente, San Juan, Capistrano, and Dana Point, to talk about the education program. But I think we need to take it a step forward and start making it a requirement for these kids. We did it riding jet skis and driving boats. I don't know why we wouldn't do it on an e-bike as well, so. With that, I don't know if I saw any head nods on that or not, but I'm going to truck staff to do it anyway.
In your, in your mind, were you thinking they would dive straight into a potential ordinance or look at what sort of roles and, or a city ordinance would do? Are you thinking dive right into something such as, hey, ensure these kids have some sort of, some sort of card on them? Or are you saying sort of higher level, what are the roles that a city can take? Are there possible ordinances? Should we stay away from it? I would certainly support you at a higher level.
Yeah, I mean, that's really where I'm going with this. I think we need to start thinking what the ordinance would look like. But the initial conversation has to be, can we do it? Does it make sense for us to do it? Or can we work closer with the state to try to get what we need out of this? This is just really letting our community know, we are thinking about this, but our hands are tied to a certain level of what we can and can't do. This is a state issue, so we need to start putting pressure on the state legislators that they need to figure this out. This is a state issue, so we need to start putting pressure on the state legislators that they need to figure this out. But if they won't do it, the city needs to be in a position to do something. So with that, since it only takes one of us to put it on the agenda, I'll put it on, and we'll have that conversation. Okay, that's the end of my, I did tell you, I turned in my report, my meetings. Thank you. All right, that's the end of my report. That brings the staff reports. Mr. Kilber, do we have a report?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, well, we're adjournment. The next regular meeting of the City Council will be May 17th, 2022, 5:00 PM, and the City Council chamber is located right here. Thanks, and we're adjourned.